All right, anything else on curriculum? All right, so we've already covered the school start time committee. So we'll move on to nominations and elections for the Duchess Boses Board.
Duchess in our packet, right?
All right, so there's a memo from Duchess Boses that it's time to start thinking about nominating board members or people to run for the Boses Board. And the meeting, annual meeting is on April 9th. That's the meeting where nominees can attend the meeting. And the election's on April 26th. So as has been past practice, we would have to, I believe that would be our regularly scheduled board meeting for once. We won't have to have a special meeting to vote on the Boses Board, but so that's good. So April 26th, we'll be voting on the candidates for Boses Board. Anything else on that? Lisa?
Since there's going to be an open seat this year without an incumbent seeking another term, do we want to try to canvas our community and see if there's somebody within Reinbeck who would be interested in serving? You know, the perennial issue is people don't want to run if there's an incumbent, but I don't know how often there's an open seat on the Boses Board, but there's certainly parents whose children are in the Boses program and, you know, maybe that's the place to start looking for people who might have an interest in being involved in, on behalf of their children, on behalf of the other children in the district in serving.
It's a really good idea.
So can I ask the, I know you guys are busy at the communications committee, but maybe you can put together something to pass the word to our parents that there's people, you know, there's a seat available?
All right, make a note.
All right, anything else on that? All right, so we'll move on to the 2016-17 budget development.
Okay, not going to spend a whole lot of time on this because there really hasn't been too many changes as of right now. But in your, before you, what I did was put together some, the changes that have occurred in this particular draft, and there wasn't a whole lot of changes. To give you an example, on that first page there, you'll see them all in there being with, really the salaries of the Reinbeck Administration Association with the passing of their contract last time. I have put them into the budget, but you'll see at the bottom, at the very bottom, there's one for health insurance. The money was budgeted, so I took the money, I put aside to it. So this is about an increase of $70,000, but I had budgeted $75,000 in health insurance to cover that cost, so that was a little bit more than neutral there. The next, so those were the increases, so those are the only increases there. The second part of it at the bottom are the deletions. Now, most of these deletions go to Boses services. I have received now all the Boses costs, but they're true values. I went through and made some adjustments to that, so you can see that there's about, oh, I'm going to say $15,000 to $18,000 worth of Boses services that was cut out. But there, another big one in there is $35,000 for the teacher retirement system, a reduction. They set their rate last week. I can't remember off the top of my head what that rate is. I think it was 11.72%, and I had budgeted 12%, so a slight reduction there. So altogether, this, this second draft went down by 50, a little over $56,000. Our budget to budget is 3.84%, and the proposed tax levy is 5.31%. Let's move on from there because I'll explain some of this stuff as we go on to the next ones. It'll start making a little bit more sense as to how these numbers changed. And what we have with the next set here is the tax levy limit. Recomputed that. Nothing changes on the first page. That all remains the same. Nothing's changed there at all. What has changed on the second page is the capital local expenditures, actually that amount, and that's actually increased, which actually helps increase our maximum allowable tax levy. So I don't remember exactly what it was last time. I think it was 1.12%. Our tax levy limit now is going up to 1.26% for a $335,000 increase to the tax levy. So we picked up some extra revenue on that end of it all, so that was nice. So let's go over to the next page and-
Can I just stop you there?
Yep, certainly.
The tax levy cap is still well below 2%, which is the common understanding of what the tax cap is.
And you've got to remember, our growth in this community is 1.13%. If we didn't have that growth, you're looking, you know, .12, .13, down in that range. So that is at least one helpful bit. As we, as we go on to the next section, which is the revenues, it's just a two pager here. And I didn't make any changes here except for the tax levy to balance everything, and I went to 5.31. But if we go to the second page with the state aid here, this is based on the state aid run that was provided to us, okay? I got another-
The governor's.
The governor's state aid. Actually, though, I think it's from Joe's, the superintendent's counsel, they were able to give me a much better one, where it actually broke it down into, into the various codes. I was able to break it down a little bit more than I typically can. And one of the things that we see here, it's a reduction of $165,000 over the previous year, and it's really all related around the excess cost aid. I strictly put it in exactly off what came off the state aid run, and that's A 3101B, excess cost aid. It's only $124,000. This is the money received back for our special ed students that are above and beyond our basic contribution. We know this number's wrong, but I haven't had the time to really, really figure it out.
What's the order of magnitude that you think it's off?
It could be off by $100,000 to $200,000 here.
That we would plus or minus entitled to more?
More, more. So I have Christine in my office, our treasurer, working on this with me to really get really what a firm number is for that, because the number they give is just a number, but there are specific formulas that we're going to work out based on our kids that are in the program that we know about, that the state doesn't know about yet, but we know, and they're there. So we'll be coming through and we'll be making that change. But I believe that we're looking anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000 increase there, and maybe even potentially more due to increased enrollment in the special ed program.
Tom, can I ask this question?
Yeah.
Is there anyone at the state that you can consult with about that number? I mean, or is that, I mean, I know that sounds so ridiculous to think that the state might provide us with some clarity on the amount of aid we receive for certain codes, but is that-
Yeah, that's a good question. There's no real, real office there you can call, but I know that Christine has been in contact with what's called the STACK unit, that they handle all the special ed students and all that. It's called a STACK. I know she's been in contact with them, but I think what I can do is get some more poignant, you know, how are these numbers determined in the state aid run versus what we actually receive? Because they're two different things altogether.
Yeah, no, and I understand that. It's just hard, I know you've done a terrific, you know, you have years of experience doing it, but when this number's so critical for our budget-
It is, yeah. It certainly is, and that's why I want to be conservative. I don't want to go too high out there and create false hopes. I really want to get a true figure as to what we should be expecting next year. You know, and that's the one thing about the whole STACK process, it happens over multiple years. So we're still going in and filing for additional monies and things of that nature, even years after the fact, when we find something like all of a sudden comes up. We had one come up the other day, and we realized that they never claimed for the summer transportation for one student. Well, we wouldn't have claimed then for it, you know? So that's the other thing now with Christine really taking over for a contractor who's basically retiring now, so Christine has taken on this additional duty, and she's going back through and learning it, and we're, and we're going back to look to see what we think are, huh, let's go back, and we've been able to go back and we're scooping some additional money. They're not great amounts of money, but every little bit's counting.
Right.
And we're also doing the Medicaid side, too. We're doing that, too. That's, that's a lot of work for so little money. But when we get to the bottom here, we're looking at a budget that's 3.84% budget to budget increase, okay? But we're seeing a tax increase of 5.31%, so it's way above there. So we're over $1 million right now with the gap. And I think that gap is really under $1 million, but how much under is yet to be determined And plus, we hope that we get some more positive news on the state aid side, but at this time, we don't, we don't even know when to expect another state aid run.
Right.
Who knows how the politics up there are going to be?
Yeah.
And how long it's going to be before we see something else, and how much influence is up there?
Right.
And hopefully, we will see more monies come to the district and to all schools. Like I say, they do have a, they have a, they have an excessive fund out, probably more than the 4% that we're allowed to have.
I'm not saying the time has come, but I think that the time will shortly be coming, maybe as soon as the next meeting, where we are going to have to start looking at some scenarios for how to deal with the gap that we're facing. You know, one of the things obviously that you're going to be looking at are the cuts that the administration has asked of the principals and the department heads, as we talked about earlier in the meeting. But I think that you might start thinking about how to put together some scenarios, potential scenarios, for us to consider in terms of how we manage this gap. You know, cuts are only one of the potential ways of dealing with this. And, you know, as you say, we don't know what the legislature's proposal's going to be, although we can sort of postulate certain possibilities, like gap elimination adjustment being eliminated entirely, things of that nature. Those, I think we're going to need to soon start seeing those kinds of scenarios laid out for us so that we can make some decisions about what we're going to do, and if necessary, we can start educating and reaching out to the community about the things that we may need, feel, we may feel that we need to do to responsibly deal with the situation. I do not want this to be a crazy rush at the end, where, you know, at the time when we have to get a budget out, one of the reasons why we're starting this so early, we've been starting it so early for several years now, is to try to get ahead of the process as much as possible. And since we've known this was going to be a difficult budget year for some time, I'd like us to have as much time as possible to grapple with that. So I would hope you'd be starting to think along those lines and starting to put some stuff together for us.
You could. Well, one thing I would like to ask you to think about, and that is class sizes, you know, what is the real true class size we should have? Like say, you know, K through 2 has been said, you know, lower the class size, the better you are, but once you get to third grade, yeah, size doesn't matter as much. But we've continued with, if it has four sections, we continue with four sections no matter what. You may have to take a look at that and say, hmm, that's not going to be the case. When we get to third grade, it's okay to have 25 in a class, you know, kind of some direction that way. I know one thing that happened that I'm working on right now, and I believe it's very complicated, and I hate to do this, but it's something we're going to have to do every year, but remember last year in sixth grade, we cut them back to four sections, right? And it was, right, you had less than 80 kids in a class, and there's no class coming up right now that has more than 80 kids in the class, so even if you have four sections, that's only 20 kids in a class. So we cut back to four sections, okay? And what happened is those sixth grade teachers who've now had one additional period actually ended up teaching other classes, either in the high school or the middle school, where they'd be. Well, now we're going to have that sixth grader now go up to seventh grade, currently now five scheduled sections. Well, I had to look to see if that four scheduled sections and all the permutations that occurred because of that gets a little bit more difficult as we, as we go up in it every year afterwards.
But that's exactly my point. In order for us to make those determinations, we need to know what the impact of them is. So you can give us the-
Oh, I certainly can.
The financial scenarios, that will help to inform our discussion as to whether that's something that we should be directing to be done.
Yeah, okay. We put various, there are various scenarios together and what it means, because there's a group.
Yeah, and I, I think one of those scenarios from my standpoint would be what would the impact be of going for an override, you know, piercing the tax cap at, you know, maybe 2%? Maybe, what would, I mean, I'm trying to do the math here, what would 2% would give us an extra significant amount of money?
They'd figure that one out in your head, it'll be the good eye.
So I, you know, I think that, for me, and I know, Lisa, you've said for a while we should be talking to our community about it. I mean, we have a lot of support in our community for all the programs we want. In fact, many of the programs, we, we have so many different programs, so many sports, so many extracurricular activities because parents and kids come to us and say they want them.
Exactly.
So we really do need to communicate to parents about if you want this kind of thing, we can't do it at a 1.25% increase this year in our budget, in our tax revenue. So I would, I would request that you and Joe come up with some scenarios around piercing the budget, and I'm just picking two because people seem to think of two as the tax cap, but I'm not stuck. I mean, they're, it should be grounded in real numbers that impact the actual budget and the program, but that might be a number to think about.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that I've been thinking about, too, and I may have mentioned to some people, or may not, but I know I spoke to Joe about it, and I'm going to put something together, and what it is, is since we began this tax cap, and, you know, even though probably on average over that entire time, it's probably been around 2% maybe, maybe even a little bit less, but because of all the growth that's occurred in our community, the taxpayer hasn't seen that tax.
Right, right.
I mean, last year-
It's spread out.
I mean, it's, it's been spread out. So you're theoretically, even though it's off a little bit, that your tax bill should only really be going up by the CPI. I mean, next year, if you look at it, it should only go up .12% because you have that 1.13% of additional new property out in your district that's going to pick up the rest of that bill. So next year, taxpayers are really looking at a .12% increase. Now, that's something that's been very different in the past, and there's a real big difference because we've always given the tax levy increase, not the tax rate increase.
Right.
The tax rate increase has been very different than the tax levy increase. So individual homeowners, unless they've expanded upon their properties and increased the value of their property, really haven't seen their tax bills go up too much over the past few years. And I think we need to make a point about that-
Communicate that.
And communicate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, you know, in reality, it really, for the school district to get back online is to take a one year, get us back in line, and then we can move forward from there.
Yeah.
So it's something to think about, even, and we'll put some scenarios together-
Yeah, that'd be good.
What you may feel comfortable with, because ultimately, it's what you're comfortable with and what you're willing to put in front of your taxpayers for approval. And like I said, you get one more chance after that, too, so.
Right.
Still scary, though.
I saw Laura first, and then Diane.
I think that's a great idea, and I would say that when we go to the community, rather than just saying, well, you guys all want these programs, so this is what it's going to cost you, I think, you know, it's important for us to give them, if you don't want to do this, then class sizes could increase, then, you know, teachers could be excess. They, I think we need to be able to give them a really holistic picture of what these numbers will do with their kids' educations. You know, there are going to be a whole bunch of people who don't want more taxes, right? We know that.
Yeah.
So if we can sort of outline what it really means, so it's not this sort of high-level budgeting conversation that most people glaze over about, that we really bring it down to layman's terms.
Excellent, excellent.
Diane?
I think that's a great idea. I just have to be careful about that, you know, if this doesn't happen, this will get cut, because that's when you get people saying, well, you should cut this instead, or, you know, you take groups against another, you know, get rid of the AP, get rid of the sports, and you never want to see that happen. But, you know, I think people are okay with a 2% tax cap. That's what they've understood it to be, so asking to go to 2%, I don't know what those numbers would look like, but I, you know, I think that people could get behind that because everybody's been kind of okay with that for the last few years. So that, you know, it'd be interesting to see where the numbers fall on that. I have a question, if you could clarify. So on the, I'm on the, this page, development page one, the-
Oh, okay.
Development, okay. So you added the numbers in for the salaries based on the contract settlement?
Yeah.
So the percentages look off to me, and I'm wondering if they're off because that's including salary and benefits, because those percentages aren't the, you know, the increases that were-
This is a two-year increase.
Okay.
It's a two-year increase.
So I knew there was a reason I-
It's a two-year increase, and just about everybody's having a longevity step, too, in this two years. Not everybody, but-
So it's not benefits, but it's because we're in-
It's because you're two years.
Because we're-
This is a two-year, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because this year's budget's reflected on last year's salary.
Right, okay. Yep, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right, anything else on the budget? I just want to add, too, that, you know, we have to be careful because we don't want to say we have to bust the cap or else this is going to happen, because that could, you know, be a negative as far as, you know, electioneering kind of thing also, so.
True.
All right. So we'll move on to good news.
Yay, we need good news.
Yeah, that's kidding.
Lisa?
I have some good news to report that came to me through the Reinbeck Science Foundation. It's actually news from Ms. Lindenbrooker, the library media specialist here at the middle school, high school. There is a Flickr album for a collaborative art project that was done between Mrs. Yearwood's second graders and Mrs. Giles' drawing classes. Ms. Giles is one of the high school art teachers. The second graders did a line drawing of a polar animal, and the high school students then used the Art Studio app on the library iPads to finish the picture. I'm going to just recite what the link to the Flickr album is, but I would also ask, Tom, if you could communicate with Steve, and maybe this link could be posted on the website so that people can look at it.
We can forward that to me, and that way we make sure we have it exactly right.
I will do that. The link, for those who want to write it down, is https://flic.kr/ahsk, looks like QMWP7J. And I took a look at it, and it's pretty amazing, so.
That's cool.
And a big thank you to the Reinbeck Science Foundation, which was, of course, instrumental in helping to provide those iPads to the library in the first place.
Great, other good news?
It's fun.
Laura?
Well, we, three of us were, were there at the Take a Stand, eighth grade Take a Stand project down the hall, and I have to say, in the three years that that project has been in the works, it continues to amaze. The writing is getting really great, and those kids are being asked to think deeply about social issues and create some visual representation of, of that and its meaning to them. It's, it's really fantastic. I'm thrilled that Mrs. Kate can keep that in her curriculum, given all the other restrictions we have. It's pretty fabulous.
Diane?
I have a couple. I had the opportunity to go to the Wizards versus faculty game the other night, and what a great event. Students from kindergarten all the way through seniors there, packed house, faculty giving it their all, and just, you know, a great way to raise funds and enjoy the evening at the same time. So it was just a really nice experience. A lot of people looking for tickets, it was sold out.
Scalping in the street.
It was a hot ticket that night.
Scalpers run out?
I know nothing about that. A lot of people looking for tickets at the last minute.
Facebook was lighting up.
And the other piece of business, I have the opportunity to go to a lot of our basketball games, and I had a parent from another school mention to me what a nice event we put on. You know, it's welcoming, we have a music playing, we have good announcers, and we have a halftime where kids can try to make a basket from half court, you know, things that you don't see at other schools all the time, and it was just nice to hear from another parent that, you know, this, you know, what a nice, you know, sometimes you have the Spanish and the French club are making food, or different, different things going on, so it was nice to hear that from my younger parent. And then the middle school chorus concert, I think we didn't talk about that last time, another great event from our music department. It was a great evening, so.
All right, other good news? Deidra?
Well, I'd just say I saw the Take a Stand project on my way to the basketball game. Past the Spanish and French club telling food, and it was a great evening, and I also, I know that, I can't remember what it stands for, but Pat Sexton's group, Enta, participated and helped with that Take a Stand project, and local artist Mimi Kraminski. And, you know, all of that really is, the whole thing, from stepping in the door to the gym and back again, was just a great, a wonderful environment, and worth every penny that we have to spend.
Indeed.
One more, I think.
Go ahead.
I guess the school had a pep rally last week that worked, and it was well received by the students. It's nice that we're able to have events like that still during the day, even for a little bit of time.
Very good.
All right, any more good news?
Lots of good news.
That's a lot of good news for-
Yes.
All right, old business. No old business, okay.
Quick.
Public comment.
Last girl standing.
Thanks for the answer, thank you.
All right, other. All right, I have one item. At my place this evening, there was a copy of a letter that went to Joe from Assemblyman Cahill requesting his input on key issues that will be impacting New York State education policy during the 2016 state legislative session. Very lengthy letter, so I won't read the whole thing, but anyway, he's asked for input from Joe, so hopefully, we'll hear more about that in the near future, and we're going to be meeting with the Assemblyman next week, so.
Very good. Excellent. So I guess we could actually say another, just to reiterate, that we had been at those meetings with Barrett and Assemblywoman Dee Dee Barrett and Senator Serena, and then Cahill's next, and, you know, that's all we can do right now. I want to say that I think it's really great that we're all very committed to those meetings because it's very important, local lobbying, and we haven't always done that. I mean, as a group, we've done some sort of lobbying over the years, and this is a more recent thing, to go to local offices, and, you know, I, I think we should just note to the public that we're doing all weekend to advocate for the school district.
Deidra?
Turning out in force.
Yeah.
It's, it's powerful. We're all crammed around that table, and the education, you know, policy person is talking, and we're talking with the, it's really important. I think it's, it's great that we're all there, and toward that end, I also want to ask about our plan, or can we get our plan together for Albany?
Yes, right.
Going to Albany?
Yeah.
It'll be a-
This is with the Ms. Bov?
Yeah.
Yeah, lobbying day, because we had talked about-
It's the end of this month.
Because Joe was saying we could just go up in the morning-
It's actually March.
Because Joe was saying we could just go up in the morning and just stay there instead of-
Yeah, it's like March 1st or something, is that right?
I think it's March 27th and 28th.
Oh, okay. Okay, it's the end of March. It's that late?
Okay, okay.
No, it can't be. It's Easter.
I feel like it's March 1st.
Right, you're right.
That's the Easter weekend, it can't be that way.
It's February 20th, 28th and 29th. I actually have it in my calendar.
Well, maybe we could just let, you know, when Joe gets back, if he could just send something out to everyone, check their calendars and-
And I think we had talked about this because there's one day of going for sort of training or something and another day that's the actual day there and maybe just sort of figure out who's available for what and, but I hope as many of us as possible can just be there. I, I do think being there-
Yeah.
-is important. Something happens and people are there.
I don't know. Is that when legislators leave the way because they see us coming in?
Exactly. We haven't talked to you.
Go ahead.
I could, I could be wrong, like things could have shifted, but I do think that by now we're all like pretty experienced lobbyists and we're not particularly timid about speaking our minds. So I would say, my experience in the past, I don't, is that that training isn't necessarily that critical-
Okay.
-if you've at least, you know, gone and spoken with a legislative party. A key thing is that they hand you a schedule at some point, and that, getting a handle of that schedule is like, when does everyone go to see the person?
Yeah, okay.
That's important, but I, again, I could be wrong, but I, my past experience is that the training piece isn't-
Right.
-may not, we may not be that.
And the County School Board Association usually has a handle on when the legislative appointments are, so they'll provide us with that information so we'll know when to be there. Diane?
And I don't know if any, I think Senator Serrano has us on her email list now, but she sent out something to all her constituents-
It's true, yeah.
About the gap elimination.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, she is reaching out and, you know, hopefully people read that and, you know, respond back to her. And that's a way for our community to get involved and get back to her because she's, she's, she's reaching out, so people can get back to her.
That's really good, yeah.
And if I could just say, since I know that you're going to be reporting out the, for the RSF about tonight's meeting, that you just emphasize the need for community involvement, including the RSF community-
Yeah.
-to be involved in, you know, reaching out to lawmakers and making their voices heard as well about how important adequate funding for the schools is this year. Thank you.
I got that all about you.
Text you tomorrow.
I don't know if you're done with, are you done with that, with the letter? I have an other, another other. In response to my colleague Lisa's wonderful plea with us all along for communicating our intentions, I would like to communicate my intention to stand again for seat on the Board of Ed.
Very good.
Early enough to let others know. And, and I do hope we can actually try to find some time to reach out to people in the community who might have questions or interest in board service. I, I know that we both attended an event down at Bosse's-
At Bosse's, yeah.
-when we were thinking about running and if we could even in some more informal way make ourselves available to answer questions. And just kind of reach out to people who seem like they might be open to and interested in service, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and if we can get that information posted on the website-
Yeah.
-it would be great.
All right. Other, other.
More other.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to action items.
Yes.
Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deidra.
Second.
By Lisa. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept two 2016 ExxonMobil Fuels Educational Alliance grants in the amount of $500 each for Rhinebeck High School and Belkley Middle School for the maintenance and support in the area of math and/or science through the sponsorship of Mr. Richard Matthews and Rhinebeck Mobile.
So moved.
By Deidra.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? Lisa?
Just once again, thank you to Rhinebeck Mobile and Mr. Matthews for their continued generosity to the district. You know, this is a gift that we've seen every year for quite a number of years, and it's important for us to acknowledge how important these gifts are and to thank the sponsors of those gifts.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of Man's Search for Meaning by Victor Frankl, Beacon Press, 2006, as a textbook for the high school psychology course.
So moved.
By Deidra.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deidra.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Patricia Danneman to commence honor about September 1st, 2016, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through September 2017.
So moved.
By Deidra.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion?[1739.47]